I do.
No, I did not.
I was so.
So.
I mean, it stays here. Both is on the ground with which is yeah.
We want drivers focused on the road.
So there's a big one last week. You know, this tightly in that pain.
There.
But this one uses death, so they want to overhand to her now and obviously so you want to take another one. Okay, this is. And then I found there was one more signature page on very last. It was to sign that.
Do it. Stand so big on features.
Yes, yes, that's what you did. So signature with the blue. Oh, you know, you don't. Oh, no.
Need a blue pen? I need a blue pen.
That's the passion for that one. All of that, but I need it at the moment, but I, but I give it to you.
I'm gonna put that all here.
I have some kind of.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever you want. It's kind of your son, but. I don't care. I mean, I care what they talk about. Whatever they'll say. Okay.
I can't believe it's June tenth already.
I know.
Why don't you look this over and see if anything we don't.
So a lot of people.
Well, yeah. And then that's the one last. Yeah.
Hey, um. Mister Chair Troy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, since we have a lot of people on, online for number, agenda number nine, could we do that one maybe earlier? Um, in the meeting? If that's okay?
Yeah, we'll do that right before the monthly report, so we'll take it as item number six.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. Today is Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty five. We'll call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. And we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Schwer, if you could lead us this morning, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. So reminder, please silence your cell phones so that they do not disrupt the meeting here this morning. Appreciate that. Uh, call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or um, the other number is six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Commissioners, any conflict of interest items?
No.
No.
Action to approve the June tenth agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All right, and I would make a note that Commissioner Gable has asked that we bring item number nine and move that forward as there are people online that do need to testify in that, so we will move item number nine between item five and six this morning. So with that, uh, is there any discussion?
No.
Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Action to approve the June third minutes.
So moved.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Now move down to item number nine. This is discussion possible action to advertise the bid package number one to include any subsequent CMAR recommended changes for the new jail. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, so I'll make the, the motion, Mister Chair, um, to do this. So basically, this is, uh, the first, I'll let the experts online talk to this a bit more, but just explain what exactly it is, but um, the layman's explanation is to get the part of the jail done before the snow flies, basically the exterior, uh, the groundwork and the exterior stuff. So we can, uh, continue working through the winter. Um, so I'll hand it over to, and that's, I'll make that motion as well.
Okay, so we have a motion by Gable. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion on that? Not all in favors?
Well, Mister, Mister Chair, you would, uh, would, I'd invite, uh, maybe Craig or, or, uh, Andrew to or to explain, give us a bit more explanation about what's going on, um, with this first bid package and then, uh, or this ad for bid, anyway.
Yeah, I can take the first. I can take the first stab at it here and, and Craig can jump in and add. So what we are doing is we have got construction documents completed for the civil engineering.
Excuse me, sir. I hate to interrupt you, but can you please identify yourself and who you're with, please?
Oh, my apologies. Andrew Etrum with Architecture Incorporated.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Go ahead.
So as I was saying, we have the, the construction documents and specifications completed for the civil engineering components of the project as well as the structural engineering components of the project. And then architecturally, it's the envelope of the building, so the exterior walls and windows, doors, the roof membrane, et cetera. So the exterior shell of the construction. And so we would release those documents to Beckenhauer um, later this week so that they can put those out for bidding. Um, and so we would get back, you know, there, to date, there have been cost estimates completed by the construction manager. And, uh, then we would, we would be getting back actual hard bid results for those various scopes of the work, uh, related to the civil structural and architectural envelope.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mister Chair, just a quick, uh, if I could ask a question just to help folks understand, um, what, what we're doing, but about how much will, what's the? Well, I guess we don't, that's why we're putting out for bid is to figure out exactly what the cost is going to be, but we have a good estimate. Um, the overall, with the overall cost of the project. And I think the thing maybe to note, Mister Chair, is that, uh, we're looking for the, um, the bids to come back, um, by July third. Is that still, still seem like a feasible? Thing, gentlemen?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, Craig.
Yeah, thanks.
The other thing, uh, as Commissioner Gable was mentioning, the benefit of this first bid package is we'll get actual hard bid results, which will then be able to be compared to the estimate and will be able to inform additional discussions and decisions made on the project. Because we will see where we, where we stand on those first bid package scopes if we're on budget or under or over, whatever it may be. That informs kind of the rest of the development of the project.
Great. Okay.
Ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Brenda.
What is the process of this then? Does this get advertised or how does that all work? Especially like when you're doing it, uh, you'll have until July third and then you'll open that at a different time? It won't be during a meeting, correct?
Yeah, this is Dick Strasberg, uh, with Tegra, and I could kind of fill in a little bit more on the process. So under South Dakota law, this is construction manager at risk. So, uh, Beckenhauer was, uh, you know, selected to be that, that construction manager. Then they take the bids and they go through and, and, uh, really check to see if there's any missing scope. Uh, and or overlapping scope, that's one of the benefits of doing this. And then they come back, uh, with a, with recommendations uh, to, uh, who they recommend as, as, uh, subcontractors. And they need about a week to do that. And then, uh, they can just select the ones that are, that they recommend. Usually it's low. The only time it isn't low is if there's something that's, uh, oh, an example on that is like on the day Sanford Premier Center, uh, we had a, uh, one bidder that was, uh, that was low, but it was greater than the volume of their, and their typical volume of, on an annual volume basis. So we're concerned that they couldn't fulfill the contract. So, so this delivery method allows that, uh, allows that flexibility if there's someone that isn't, uh, qualified to do it, uh, to choose somebody else. So that's kind of our view of the process.
Mister Chair, a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
So, uh, maybe Brenda or, or Dick, you might know the answer to this question. So what other, do we have to open the bids publicly? Cause, uh, July third is a Thursday.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so might that, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the bids, the bids go to Beckenhauer and they are not opened, uh, publicly.
Okay. Okay. I mean, does there have to be any, 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 uh, open, I guess, um, demonstration of what, where all the different bids came in? Um, do we have to list them at all publicly or?
No, uh, they, they, they don't. Having said that, it's, you know, it's, it's an open process. So Beckenhauer shares everything, but it doesn't, uh, legally it doesn't have to be opened publicly.
Like during the, okay, but it's, but it's open. It's, it's, it's public information.
It's public information now.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions for the? Gentlemen on Zoom? Okay, if not, we have a motion and a second. And I'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move back up to our monthly reports and we'll begin with the auditor this morning.
Yes, good morning. Um, so currently, uh, this summer, as you've probably seen on the radio, it is time for the auditors to go through our voter records and remove any of those who are invalid, who have not voted in the last eight years, and then also make sure all of our death records are, um, taken care of. It's just a cleanup on off election year. I am also assisting the city, um, with their election in June seventeenth, where my office will be open from seven to seven. And then they will bring their ballots up and we'll run them through our tabulator. Uh, we will do a public test this Thursday morning at ten AM, so we'll take care of that for them. Um, also, I am working on county budgets, getting those entered in. And our growth reports have been turned in to me, so I'm also updating those for next year's levy work. Other than that, it's business as usual.
Right, any questions? All right, thank you, Brenda. Uh, Director of Equalization, Shauna. She's not here. Okay. We'll move on to Community Service Director, Sarah Faust. Good morning.
Morning, Sarah.
Just turn your mic on there, Sarah. Thank you.
There you go. All right, good morning. Um, you have the, should have the charts in front of you for kind of our data for the services that we've had, um, forty-eight different individuals seen in our office in May. Ninety-two different services and a hundred total client contacts. So, um, continue to stay pretty steady in the office. Um, again, funerals are the largest chunk of our budget, then the following behind that is much smaller portion is transportation. That's primarily bus tickets for people that want to return to their home communities, um, and are stranded here in Watertown. Majority of our time has been spent carrying South Dakota cares and then the staff doing case management. Care coordination is kind of that one time, just need a quick referral or service and then they're done with services. Any other questions or anything on any of that data? With that? Okay, all right, if not, I will move on to some of the other information. We received three thousand dollars in administrative fees that were reimbursed for the South Dakota cares in May. Again, I mentioned this last month, but July will be the last month that we're taking applications for that. Um, it, that could have a major impact on the resources in our, for the county and the needs. We do pay quite a few, quite a bit of rent through that, and so that program will be ending. So, um, you know, just to be aware that that could have an impact. For Medicaid reimbursement, we were reimbursed one thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents for May, um, Medicaid services. That's the CHW Case Management Services. As far as our office, Alex started yesterday, our new assistant, and so I'm really glad to have her on. I think she'll be a great fit in our office. We are still looking for office space. We, um, kind of are outgrowing and expanding, uh, um, beyond where we are. My office has become the storage room, so I have that, an agenda item to get a storage unit because I don't actually want it all stored in my office. Um, and I also in May, I attended the Mother of God Monastery Partners and Mission Community Event, which is, was a wonderful event and really a visioning process to validate a lot of the work that we've been doing over the last several years in our community. So we'll continue to support them in that work that they're looking at. Angie has done a great job. You know, she started in April and she's really put her priority as starting a diversion program. She's been working with our state's attorney and the judges on developing that and they are hoping to start July first. And so we'll have more information, but wanted to let you know the adult diversion program is looking to start here. And so, um, that's been, she's had some great conversations with the state's attorney and judges on that, and so grateful for their support as well. She also helped facilitate the nalox boxes that went around the community, um, working with Angela Kenneke and her, Emily's um, program that she has. So we're excited to have that expand to Watertown. And she's also working on starting an overdose response team for that. So some great things happening to deal with drug use and, um, system, legal system in our community. The Systems of Care and Cottington Connects Information, the interagency meeting is this Thursday at the police department at ten o'clock, and that's just our community conversation about what's happening and what resources we have for providers. Our agency of the month this month is Sanford and Joanne Paulson is the individual of the month. She really took the lead on helping plan and organize the Splash into Summer event, which is the other thing we want, just to make sure you know about that. That was a great success. We, they estimate over a thousand people attended that event. They served six hundred meals and ran out of food within forty-five minutes. And so, um, it sounds like it was just a fantastic event that went really, really well. And for the housing committee, we are continuing to meet. We're working on putting together a comprehensive plan and looking at having some meetings in July to address housing more specifically in Watertown. For childcare, you hopefully heard that My Little Village opened, and so that's a real success for Watertown, and thank you for your support that you've given for that. That really helps address childcare needs in our community. And as always, check out www.cottingtonconnects.com for more events and information.
Question on the naloxone.
Yes.
Boxes, um, speaking with, um, the Fire Chief of Florence, he would like to get some of those for his department. So how would he go about doing that?
He should call our office.
Okay.
Um, and Angie can get him connected and we can see what we can do. The Prevention Center, Northeast Prevention also has them, and so um, either our office or Northeast Prevention could help get him connected with that. Yep. Yeah, that would be great.
Send him your way.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, thanks.
Okay, yes, thanks. I do have one agenda item.
Hey.
See, you're gonna go.
Number is that?
I did.
Well, you're back already?
I'm back.
Oh. Oh. I didn't even know you were gone. Go again.
Then my staff did great.
All right, so she has agenda item number seven, so let's go ahead and go down to that. Discussion possible action to approve the community service office to rent a storage unit.
Yeah, and so this is just as I mentioned, we have converted our storage room into an office space, which means we don't really have any storage space. I did talk to Steve if there was any, um, accessible space here for the county, in the county places, um, properties, and he said there wouldn't really be anything that's available. And so we're looking at renting just a small storage unit, uh, five by ten, just enough to put some of the stuff so that, until we can find a better office solution.
Where would it be placed?
It would, it'll be over in the easy store, storage units over by the high school.
A little inconvenient, though.
Y- yeah, but not too bad. It's between my house and here.
Hey.
Load up, bro.
Mister.
Oh, what's the?
Oh, yeah. It's sixty dollars a month.
Okay, so we have a motion by Johnson and a second by.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any further discussion? Sixty dollars a month?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. How was your vacation? Good. Must have been pretty quick.
All right, let's move on to item number eight. Discussion possible action to authorize the chair to sign the annual State Department of Health WIC contracts. Brenda?
All right, so you have that before you. Um, the new amount that counties will be reimbursed is an hourly rate of twenty-one sixty-five plus fifty percent of the benefits. The total amount for the contract with Cottington County will be fifty-four thousand eight hundred eight dollars and seventy-six cents. This contract runs from June first, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. They have a new way of signing now, Troy. We'll work that out. If you guys approve this with that cobblestone, it will be an electronic signature, so.
Okay.
Second it.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. And I don't think there was anything really changed in that.
No, it's just the reporting and how, pretty much the same. Just the dollar amount's a little different, so.
Right. All in favor, say aye. Whoop, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, I just noticed this page on the, I put it on the screen, um, that I don't remember that page. Do we have to do weekly activity reporting or is that something that was there and I just missed it before?
No, that isn't for us. They just include all the documents. That is something that
Okay.
They, uh, track. Yep.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to discussion. No, we already did that one. Uh, item number ten, action to approve the updated search and rescue team members roster.
Right, there was a new member added, Miles York, so we just needed to update the current list.
Which group is he under?
He's under Squad B.
Squad B?
Mm-hmm.
All the way at the bottom. Squad.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Gable, second.
Yeah, second.
Second by Johnson. And this is just, uh, just a, for, uh, county insurance, since they're volunteers, they have, they do fall under the county's insurance plan. So if they are injured, um, then they're covered, uh, while performing their duties. So we thank them for their service. And we usually do that at the beginning of the year, I believe.
And we did have one, yes, yes. We did approve one earlier, but now when they add someone, then we need to update, so.
Okay. Right, any more discussion on that?
I would just echo what the chair said. I appreciate their volunteer work in this, uh, group. You know, we probably don't hear or see much of them until it's an emergency. And then they're very, very important.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Team's been around a long time. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven is action to authorize the chair to sign a quote for timekeeping hardware and support. Keeps coming back to.
Yes, we did approve that last week. Um, so I have been working with Nathan, the salesman, on since we are not up and running yet and our time is ticking as to when this will need to be renewed, which is in February. I tried to get that date moved back a little bit, but because of the way their system is, they're not able to do it. So what they turned around and did on last week's amount was twelve thousand, I gotta look at that, what we approved. What they did is a reduction actually on the cost of what that would be. So the new amount that, um, we will be charged for the hardware that we approved last week is ten thousand five thirty-six oh two. So that was how
They are able to. System, but they can't turn the clock back, so.
Not, uh.
Basically. Pro rating a bit, pro rating a bit. That's a good pun. Yeah, good pun.
Yeah, thanks. All right, so do I have a motion?
Do we need a motion to amend the?
Yeah, they can amend the amount from.
To sign a quote, since it's.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson? Second by Gable? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number twelve is action to approve the auditor's account with the treasurer and note monthly register of deeds fees.
Right, you have those documents as well. So you, the one sheet shows, um, all the cash on hand at the end of May, um, twenty twenty-five, and then also on the other sheet where it's auditor's account with the treasurer, it shows all, um, our investment amounts, cash on hand, and then it also shows our custodial funds. Those are the funds that go out to the schools, townships and cities and towns. Um, so the ending amount was thirty-one million two ninety-four, seven twenty-two ninety-five. And the treasure or the registered deeds amount for May is thirty-six thousand three twelve forty-five.
Move to, move to approve.
Motion by Gable, second by Schwer. Any discussion on those amounts? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action to approve abatement applications.
Oh, there are none today.
Action to approve claims for payment.
Okay, so we have, we're going to do these in three different motions if we could, so we can keep the, the jail stuff separate. So we'll do the big bunch of claims first. Um,
Is there a nine?
The normal, pardon?
Is there a nine-one-one claim in there?
Yes, there's a nine-one-one claim as well.
Excuse myself from that.
Yep. Uh, so as you can see on the last page, I did put down, so the total amount was one million two forty-eight, two thirty-two fifty-two, but the state pass through amount was six hundred sixty-five thousand one sixty-one fifty-six, which actually the, the county total amount is five hundred eighty-three thousand seventy and ninety-six cents.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
On the page five.
Okay.
Uh, care of the poor.
Yep.
That, uh, kind of got a while there. And what, uh, I went through it pretty carefully. You know, generally we had to have anything. Is it just they?
There's a lot of that rent, the ERA two funding, which we will backfill her, um, with, uh, supplement, budget supplement. So a lot of these are the ERA rental assistance, which will be coming to an end. Um, and some of the other charges, I guess you'll have to ask her specifically, cause you know, I'm, she, uh, puts those in, but, um.
You know, it's sixty-five, over sixty-five thousand.
Yes.
And that's normally, that's not.
Right.
It's not a whack.
No, but if you look, there's a lot of the rentals and I redact the names just for privacy purposes, but if you look over on left-hand side, if you see like a property, those are all rentals, so. And you add up those amounts, that will probably make quite a difference. Some of these are going for several months when they are, um, getting approval, so.
Okay, turn my question.
All righty.
Hey, any more discussion? Uh, do we have a motion?
Yes, you have most. Oh, no, nope, you don't.
Need a motion?
I'm, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Gable, second by Schwer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen is action to approve automatic budget supplements. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I forgot.
So the next one then is to geotech engineering. This is for part of the jail build and that is in the amount of six thousand dollars. And that was for the, um, boring, the soil boring.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Then our nine-one-one fees for the month, uh, these are always behind April is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents. It will be remitted to the city of Watertown.
And as a matter of record, I will excuse myself from this vote.
Move to approve. Second it.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Nothing for fifteen.
Nothing for fifteen. Item number sixteen is action to approve personnel changes.
We have several. We have one. It's the new hire that Alexandria Silva in the, she's administrative support in the community service office, started on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Her rate of pay is twenty-two thirty-five. Um, so that's the new hire. And then we are, we will start getting our, um, annual step increases now because those all need to be submitted um, after they do a performance appraisal. So we have our first two. One is, uh, Todd Rose. He will be going to step five, thirty-eight, thirty-six an hour, and Jay Roberts. He is, um, will be at step four, thirty-eighty-five an hour.
Motion by Johnson to approve, second.
Second.
Second by Schwer. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, travel request.
We have one, community service to attend a conference, and you have all the details in front of you.
This is a budgeted IM?
I would assume she has it in travel.
It says it is.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson to approve.
Second.
Second by Gable? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Public notices. Possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at this next week.
Now, did, did you find a date for that, uh, commissioners? Now, did, did you find a date for that, uh, commissioners?
Oh, I have not looked yet, Myron. I'm sorry. Let me see if I can pull it up here quick. While you're.
The Sioux Valley Commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, that's probably gonna, uh, didn't we just have one a few weeks, like a month ago?
Yeah.
Is that in, is that in June or is it in July?
When you have, you know, because you need to have your, and I don't know if they'll have a meeting before that, or you just need to have any of your, um,
Resolution.
Resolutions.
Resolutions.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's hard to get them, yeah, it's hard to make that deadline to get them.
Okay, let's see here.
I don't have anything, I guess.
I know there's a candidate form. Fourteen.
That might be, might be one there, could be.
Just possibility.
Yep.
Pretty big community event.
There is, uh, Drug Court graduation tomorrow at 11:00. 11:00 AM tomorrow. If anybody plans on attending that, I'll be here, I think. So it's 11 o'clock. Is that, that's over at the extension building? Do you know?
Yeah, up there.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Third floor.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody have anything else? All right. If not, let's move on. Number 19 is old business. But do you have any old business? New business?
Oh, I might mention, I should have put it on this week, but I didn't. I'll have it on next week's agenda that the courthouse and all county offices will be closed next Thursday, um, June 19th for, uh, Juneteenth. So I will make sure I have it down, but I thought I should just mention it.
Juneteenth, June 19th. Okay. All right. Um, anything for the open, public comments? Anything for the open? Commissioner comments?
I did attend the South Dakota Retirement Board meeting this past weekend. Just like, uh, every other retirement fund, uh, it's been taking some severe hits. But we are still 100% fully funded as, um, July 1, which is coming up here very quickly. All the participants will receive a 1.7% increase and and we look way far ahead. So we're looking at a year from now and, and if things don't change, it will be less than that next year. But we're still fully funded.
All right. Thanks for the update. Commissioner Gable, do you have anything?
No, just, uh, yeah, I'm still here. So just, no. Just, uh, ongoing meetings, you know, with the design team on the jail goes on. So.
Okay, sounds good.
As you might imagine, yeah.
Right. We do have a need to go into executive session for South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2 for the purposes of, uh, uh, legal pending litigation contractual matters and also for, uh, preparing for contract negotiation with, uh, an employee. So look for a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Motion by Schwer, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone. We're in executive session. We do not anticipate any action following that.